All right, so let's call this to order six o'clock. Roll call.
Commissioner Irwin is absent. Commissioner Somavia?
Present.
Vice Chair Enzisberger?
Present.
And Chair Benz?
Present. Okay, presentations to the Open Government Commission. 3.1, public comments by members of the public.
Let us speak with her.
Thank you. Close thought, reports from commissioners. Anyone? No, nothing's going on with your job, your, what was your little deal? The video stuff.
Oh, frequently asked questions?
Yes.
I'll have the presentation.
Oh, oh, pardon me, pardon me. Is it now the time or later?
Later, we have it in the agenda.
Okay. That's why I should not be the chair. Okay, Karen, would you like to report anything?
I would like to report that two people have asked me if they should try to join the Open Government Commission. I said yes, of course, and then I said, oh, Jimmy, I suppose you haven't gotten any calls.
No.
Yeah.
Not yet.
I wasn't sure, but.
Okay, that's it. Okay, consent calendar.
I have no changes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, public comment.
Oh.
Okay, and do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
All right.
To approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Somavia?
Oh, yes, yes.
Vice Chair Enzisberger?
Yes.
And Chair Benz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, approval of the May 11th, 2023 special meeting minutes.
If you saw the notes, you'll see that.
Oh, go to item 6.1, unfinished business. 6.1, hybrid meetings. Commissioner Somavia?
Yes.
Okay, let's go get my presentation.
How exciting.
So we're getting closer.
Training how to do staff reports of panel chats.
Incredible. Tell me, he should be the boss of everybody.
You should have seen him on the grand jury.
And I can do it from here, right?
Yes.
Like that. Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. So our presentation for enabling hybrid public meetings. I guess this is what we'll be talking about. Just to define and disclose kind of when we're using enabling hybrid public meetings, we're making that distinction between how the public participates versus a virtual meeting, i.e. remote for city council members. We're not delving into that arena. This is solely how the public participates through a hybrid concept. So the scope, you know, we looked at other cities in Santa Clara, looked at what their capabilities were, and then we sought to create a bridge of their in-person experience, moving them over into a virtual environment. And we were looking at doing that by proposing some guidance, some visual aids, and some other tools that you'll see in our recommendations coming up. So then our objective, again, to identify best practices and benchmarks that could, you know, help Gilroy in its endeavor to enabling hybrid public meetings. So it's, yeah, it's kind of far away. This is part of your backup slides. We threw population in there just so you could, you know, get an idea of if you wanted an apples-to-apples or close-to-apples comparison, but you can easily recognize as you look at the capabilities. Those in blue, I call spectator. Those in yellow are speaker. So spectator would be those who offer capabilities to attend the meeting virtually as spectators, no comment capability in the green columns, and then the yellow would be speaker capability, those providing technology or websites that allow members of the public to provide comments electronically or via Zoom or dial-in. And some of those are kind of synonymous where if you're in Zoom as a spectator, you raise your virtual hand, you move over to speaker. So.
So while the meeting is happening?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then where you see the agendas and the date, our endeavor started fairly early, like in April. So I used a lot of the agendas from the cities based on that timeframe. As I was getting closer to present it to you guys, I wanted to make sure I had the most relevant. And some of those Xs appeared once I reconciled the list again because cities have been starting to add additional capabilities.
Recently.
Recently, yeah. As we started looking at findings and recommendations, I was trying to identify like categories or buckets we could put those in. And so this you'll see as we identify the findings and recommendations. We compartmentalize them, you know, do they fall under the agenda cycle? Do they fall under public communications? So as you see those identified, the findings and recommendations by numbers, you'll also see the associated phase of the cycle because we felt it important to take it from end to end. And then kind of that blue is not really a rectangle, but rounded rectangle, where you see public communications.
Right.
We created that area because public communications can actually start, you know, before an agenda drops. It can start at agenda drop and then end at the meeting. So that covers that, that area. So the first two findings we saw, again, Agenda 1 would be what I classify as spectator. Hey, this is how you observe a meeting, whether it be in person, at a physical address, or online. Agenda 2 is actual speaker ability. So that's in that agenda phase, finding 1 and 2. And this was just highlighting the need to, if we do approve or recommend this to the city council, that along with the recommendation, we provide clear instructions on how the public should do that. Yeah, through the agenda. And then the importance, I kind of just categorized them, A, B, C, A being the most, C being the least, and we felt that was important. On our recommendations, again, a disclaimer, and you'll see it in red on a lot of the slides. And my hope was, as we're providing those recommendations to you guys, it's really so you can visualize the art of the possible, not what the committee or commission is telling staff to do or mandate. This is just one solution we came up with. And as we saw the findings, this is potentially what it could look like.
Okay.
So again, as you see the box on the left highlighted, that's spectator instructions, how to attend. And then the box on the right would be how speaker, if you choose to speak, those are your methods for speaking. Then they're, you know, it's a notional agenda I typed up, but that's potentially what it would look like.
Ty, has anybody ever called in during a meeting, except for during COVID, but like at a regular meeting?
No, no, the Brown Act does not allow for calling meetings.
Oh, doesn't?
Nope. This just so happens because of COVID, we have all of these different capabilities that the public can do. So it's an option for them, for the council to do, you know, to approve that we want to call in the capabilities. I wanted to do a quick note for the calling capabilities. It's because they're using Zoom, for example, there is a dial-in number feature that they can do.
For, yeah, part of Zoom, right, right.
The only thing that we did prior to COVID was having council do a teleconference before Zoom. They can call in and we have a big poly- polyline device that would actually allow council to interact with the rest, audio only.
Okay, okay.
And then finding 3, under communication. We did see some cities offered a an all-council email address, which was really a nice feature that I particularly, particularly like given, you know, how Gilroy is chartered, where, you know, all of our council members are at large. So it's really not incumbent for the public to convince one council member, you got to convince a majority. So that's where an all-council member email address would be really beneficial.
Does one exist?
There it is.
There is one.
In fact, we highlighted in the note, and it's simply to make the commission aware of Ty beat us to the punch. So that's where the link exists, and when you click on it, it brings up your default email application, and then it goes to city manager, city clerk, and the seven city council members. And I presume Ty incorporates those into the agenda packet, if they come in as agenda item.
Correct. If it's not a, normally if it's an agenda item, they send it to public comment. Generally, if it's just a regular comment or something, then it won't be part of the agenda.
And then finding, oh, and that's also why, under the importance for that one, I put NA because it's already in place. The next one is a comment feature, and this is more of an electronic comments. So some cities incorporated an electronic comment feature in their meeting agenda web application, and it would look something like that on the right, under actions where it says comment. And when you clicked on it, it would advance you.
And you can, okay.
And you could pick your agenda item. The comment would be associated with which meeting you were attending. You could decide, hey, whether you oppose it, support it. One city that uses it, Santa Z, you could read other people's comments, whether they were in opposition or support, or even expand upon, hey, I like their idea, but here's even further how I would go. And I kind of did like that feature as well. So again, just a notional comment. I just made that one up, of what it would look like. Finding 5 was kind of letting the public know, not only through the agenda, but, you know, another visual aid of where they can participate in the meeting. So in this case, we took the basic intro slide at the beginning of every meeting and just said, hey, if you want to be a spectator, yep, there's all the ways. If you want to be a speaker, the top two, that's how you.
Does anyone monitor the YouTube page, YouTube channel? Like for comments or?
Well, comments are disabled.
Oh, they are, okay.
But I can see in real time the amount of folks who do watch it on YouTube.
The next one, some cities had developed codes of conduct, some developed norms of behavior, some did rules of civility, some did rules of decorum. And like one city, they did both rules of civility and decorum. And this, you know, the whole impetus to this was, hey, if you're coming online, there are things you need to be aware of. And not only that, but it kind of gives administration the ability, not only to, if they needed to mute or say, hey, sorry, we, you know, that's out of line. There's kind of justification, hey, you violated this rule, sorry, this is why we're muting you.
Can you do that? I mean, like, if somebody's at the podium and starts spewing something inappropriate?
You probably are very limited, but there are exceptions. And I think everything that you have here will go through the city attorney for review and to make sure that we're stepping in something we don't need to.
Yeah, I was trying not to wordsmith and like, okay, I need handcuffs and.
I get enough air in it.
And then these, again, just draft notional rules of civility and decorum. And even the enforcement side is pretty basic, you know, quit, you get a warning, quit saying that.
Right.
And then 7 is kind of operationalizing the comments. This is how, under the phase, you see this is the meeting now. This is how, in my, you know, thought process, Ty would operationalize, hey, whoever is dialing in, press star nine, whoever's virtually through Zoom, virtual hand raise, and he could orchestrate all that. With this one, what I really wanted the commission to take away was all the opportunities, if the recommendations are adopted, where the public has the ability to chime in. They can do it well before an agenda even drops. That's the two emails. Once the agenda drop, and that pre-agenda is that seven-day prior agenda, and then the agenda post, I call that the 72-hour agenda. And you just start seeing the capabilities open up, you know, the further you go down. So, you know, after an item, let's say like an ordinance, you know, goes for, you know, a first discussion, it can come back on consent, a member can take it off of consent. Well, then you start public comment on that non-consent item again. So again, it's really just a highlight, not only for you guys, but also I think the public, if this were to go live in the city council, tons of opportunities.
Yeah, you can't say you're not allowed to talk.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, some people think that their only opportunity is in person. Well, you got plenty others, and it's just letting them know what those are. The captions file, some cities take their meetings, they create a transcript file, and it will, it would look similar to you click on transcript and it pops up there. What I did with this notional one is I was able to pull the transcript off of YouTube, and the only problem with that is it doesn't tell you who's speaking. So when you're reading it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But there are applications out there like Otter, you know, for anyone who's used that transcript tool. Or maybe you may have some, I just, you know, was trying to come up with a notional. That's essentially what it would look like. But I did give it an importance C because YouTube provides much of the capability, if not more, and you'll see that in the next recommendation. But wanted to leave that one there for you guys to decide whether it was significant enough. The next one, a smart sheet, started introducing these smart sheets with this recorded media. And this would just give the public an opportunity if they had a question, hey, how would I go back and see a meeting? This smart sheet, which was included in the backup, instructions with visual aid on how you could get to the recordings, whether it be those that the clerk posts on the website, the city website, or if they migrate over to the YouTube channel, it provides hyperlinks for them to do that. The red circles are simply keys to the visual graphics on page 2 and 3. And the reason why I'm not trying to plug YouTube, but it has so much translation services.
Oh.
So.
Well, and the cities are using YouTube.
Yeah, and with closed caption, even if you have it archived, you could turn the closed caption to Spanish and read the Spanish. So.
Any other languages?
Oh, Vietnamese, yeah. A lot, yeah. And then I kind of threw the QR code there. It could be something that, you know, the clerk could have during a meeting, and somebody raises a question, scan it. That's how you can get to it. So that's where you'll see how I introduced the smart sheet for this particular.
I like the smart sheet. It's really good.
And that concludes my briefing. Standing by for questions or comments.
I feel like I should clap. That was, well, I expect nothing less than that. That was very good. I don't know, I don't know about the shutting people off if they're abusive, but obviously that's a minor point. I mean, the whole thing is, the whole, the whole picture is like really good, really good. And it sounds like a lot of things that we already have capability to do, it's like turn it on or not. And I guess we recommend and they have a discussion and.
Yeah, I was actually thinking about this because when we read the boards of commissions, I didn't really think anybody would actually take us up on taking things to council. So you guys are the first to really show us how to do this. I, I think what I would recommend is that you write a simple one-page correspondence letter to council. We'll include that in the packet under council correspondence, saying you request to either present to council or that your report is submitted and considered and agendized. And that way, it can be pulled by a council member, and if there's three other council members who are interested in what you're proposing, then you're on your way. And we as staff take that on, we help them through that process, of course, with you as well. And if they, there's not four that are interested, then it just dies. So.
Try to get next year.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
And I can't speak for them, but I know there is interest in this. And we've kind of said we don't have the ability right now to take it on ourselves, but it looks like you've kind of dabbled in this a little bit.
The ball down the court.
Yeah, exactly. So that would be my suggestion. So in a nutshell, decide which ones you would like to recommend as a group, and then probably have a small letter or something to the.
Like the sample correspondence.
Yeah, it says, you know, we've got these projects we're working on, we'd like to introduce this to, talk to council and get on the agenda, and I'll get on the way.
I think a presentation would really.
Be very specific, specific about what you're looking to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be really useful. I mean, everybody's visual, just selects them, but it just makes more sense. It's way more impressive, very nice.
And then if we get that, you know, you do your presentation, we get direction from council, then we'll work on implementing, and there's going to be some things we're going to say, this is going to be hard for us to do.
Yeah.
But that's okay. I mean, there are some things on here that are probably pretty easy for us to do. So it's up to us to communicate and try to figure out how it gets implemented and what we need to do that.
So, so we need to discuss which of the.
One, some are all, other recommendations?
Right, right. So do you have any comments about the recommendations?
No, I think it was put together very beautifully. And with the, with as many other cities in the area that are already utilizing these services.
That was impressive.
Yeah, in fact, Santa Clara is also, is already doing it too. So there's really only Gilroy and Campbell that are not.
Right. So, yeah, I agree. I mean, I think they're all, the only thing that I think somebody would need to look into is the, you know, what we've already discussed. But I like all the recommendations. I think this is a really fine job.
Very thorough.
I'm glad you're with us.
Yeah.
My only apprehension was the captions one, but I kind of liked your comments, Mr. Forbes, where leave it up to the staff to decide whether we can implement or not.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but, I mean, seeing on, as visual, what cities in the county are already doing this? I mean, all their boxes are checked. I mean, not surprised that Santa Clara's missing one box, but they have the others filled.
No, they're doing call-in and Zoom.
Are they? Oh, I thought they were missing one. No, whatever. Well, anyway, I can honestly, Santa Clara can do it.
We are much more ready for these things now than we were even just a year ago with the technology upgrades we've done. So that, that was a big reason why we weren't like really embracing it.
Right.
And we removed that barrier, so it's really, I think it's up to the seven to decide if this is what they want.
So I just imagining what the pushback would be, I think one of the things that, that they might have an issue with is how long will it make the meeting last? So I don't, I mean, they just have to decide, I guess, but, you know, if, if there's 20, there are 20 speakers in person, you know, what do they get, a minute? So, I mean, I guess the same could be figured out for who's calling in.
Do you have any way to pull statistics from the other cities and see like what the normal number of people that would appear in person versus the normal amount of traffic that they're receiving now?
What if they keep that?
Each of the findings, there were six cities that I sat in on their city council. I mean, the capabilities there, it's the public's not really, yeah, jumping at it.
Yeah, what I've seen watching various council meetings is that you still have five or six people that may be in person and maybe four or five, usually even the same people that are dialing in or going through Zoom. It didn't seem to me to be a huge number unless there was something very controversial.
Yeah.
Well, like I recall the perks of when they were, you know, having some issues. And that probably was during COVID, and, you know, 25 people called in with exactly the same comments. So, yeah, I get that too. So.
Coming from anecdotal experience and from my other colleagues in Santa Clara County, one comes to my mind is Sunny Bell, and he says that there are more people who speak in the, on Zoom than come in person, for example, because it's just a matter of convenience. So he does not see that many people coming into the council meetings, but they still have long council meetings because of the Zoom feature.
The call-in.
Yep.
But you can only speak a few times, so people are like calling in for like every issue?
Some particular issue and they're calling in, so, yeah.
Yeah, I can see that is a being a hiccup for them, but, you know, we just have to put it out there.
You're still limit, this is a question, even though I'm sounding like a statement might come out of my mouth, but you still can only comment one time on each subject, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what.
It has to be for that particular subject.
Right, right. So you have to stay on agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, I could see where collectively, for an entire agenda, it might add an hour or two to a meeting, which I'm not saying is, is, I'm not dismissing that. But still, at a minute per person, you're probably not going to get 20 people per item.
Right.
There aren't even.
And the last time when we had to do a shelter in place and had in, not in person, but remote meetings, when we had this brief moments back in May, no, January and February of last year, the amount of folks that did call in were the same amount of folks that would have attended the council meeting too. So I don't know, it all depends on what type of topic it is, and also our community. It feels like our community here tends to come in anyway, so.
Yeah.
But that's not to say that we don't want that feature to provide hybrid, this is that I think it would not increase necessarily.
And I think we could also look at how many people did call in during COVID, because that was the only choice, versus how many people showed up prior or now. And if the numbers weren't significantly higher during COVID, that would also show that this is probably going to be a stable venture.
I think, I think probably at least initially, but as more people know, it is possible that more people utilize the feature because, you know, everybody says, well, I don't, I don't know how to do all that. But I can see the more it gets out there that it's available, I think more people will use it. I mean, I'd still come to meetings because they're a lot different in person than they are on camera, so.
Yeah, and there's some assurance that what you're saying is being heard versus what you wrote was read, you know? So.
Okay, so what's next?
Motion.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation by the committee of Shane and Jessica. Did Jessica help with this? She was part of this, right?
Yeah.
I'll second that. I guess part of the motion should be to recommend to. I guess part of the motion should be to recommend to the city council?
Yes.
Yeah.
You would actually write a letter to me, because then I use that to get to council. So it would be written to me and the council.
We should also make the motion to approve the writing on the three of the eyes.
I, I can help you. I mean, if you just.
Yeah, that's easy.
Okay. So, and you're a city administrator, not a city manager?
Uh huh.
Just step away.
So the motion is to recommend the recognition of the subcommittee and have Commissioner Salavia to
Draft.
draft the council correspondence addressing it to Jimmy Forbes.
Correct. Okay.
Uh, that was, uh, motion by Chair Benz and second by Vice Chair Edisberger. So Commissioner Salavia?
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair Edisberger?
Yes.
And Chair Benz?
Yes.
There you go. That's it, you're done.
I would say to finish up, your first opportunity to get it to council would probably be September 11th.
Perfect.
Pretty jammed up on the 21st, so. Or Chief Hila.
Okay. Um, oh, do I need to go back to 5.1?
No, you can go to 6.2 now.
Okay, 6.2.
But we should also.
Any public comments?
No public comments.
Let's close public comments. Okay, uh, 6.2, open government ordinance, old training video. Continue the item to November 2nd, special meeting, because Mr. Irwin is absent.
Correct. I recommend that the council, the commission just continue this item because.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yes, we'll do that. We don't need to vote on that.
No.
Okay, public comments?
No public comments.
Um, 6.3 FAQs.
Okay, um, part of our 24, 25 work plan was to, um, create a tool that captures our commission's frequently asked questions. On the 11th of May, we kind of came up with, um, what I call the five Qs. That's kind of where we brainstormed and identified five initial questions talking about, you know, what's the open government ordinance? Um, how do we get a website to a different language? And I did, um, rework some of the, the verbiage or the language um, just to make it flow a little better. But you'll also notice that we added, uh, three additional questions, um, to that as well, to include a spreadsheet. So notionally, this is what potentially a frequently asked questions link would be, could be on the open government or open Gilroy website. You can kind of see it up at the top right under the quick links. Uh, and then when the public clicks on that link, it would take them to a collapsed view of the questions, those being the eight questions. And when they select on a question, for example, question eight, that's where it would expand that answer. Uh, and it would give them, um, you know, some insight as well as hyperlinks.
Right.
That would cookie crumb them over to, um, a much more extensive document. So question one was what's open government ordinance? So on this one, well, for all the questions, for the most part, uh, came out of the ordinance itself. Uh, I, or archived meeting minutes, like when it, the origin. It took a lot of research. Uh, the Gilroy dispatch was very helpful because there was a lot of detail in there as well. So this is kind of that 30,000 look view on, hey, here's what the open government ordinance is. And then when we get to question two, hey, why and how did it begin? And that's where it kind of goes into, um, you know, the ordinance's sponsor, Mr. Woodward, um, why it came about, you know, more of, hey, you'd almost have to sue the agency uh, to get the documents that you wanted versus our, you know, the city's approach, which is, hey, everything's kind of publicly available for you to self-help click or ask directly through the, the clerk's office. Um, so that was question two. And then question three being the features. Uh, the features being public access, the first, the second being public information and records. And then the third being our commission. Uh, and that just gives a little bit of detail, but again, hyperlink some over to source documents if they want to read more about it. And then that's the public information. And this is right from the backup slides in your binders as well. And then establishes the open government commission and what we do. And then the fourth being, um, you know, how do you translate? So we got the verbiage and I kind of dabbled in, um, some editorial stuff. And it's a screen capture recording that kind of walks the public on how to change the website from English to, and the language I picked was Spanish just because it was kind of easy to find. But they can kind of see, not only hear the voice, but they can see, um, me select the different languages, what comes up.
Wow. That's cool.
And then once they select their language, as they. Yeah, and as they further migrate through the website, it keeps it on that language. So you don't have to do every website.
Clicking.
Exactly.
Okay, wow, that's useful.
And then, um, I highlight here, if you just hold your cursor over the Spanish language, it'll translate it to the original website language back to English for that portion of it. So it's kind of a good learning tool to at least help refresh my, um, abilities, my limited Spanish speaking abilities.
Very good, yeah.
And then of course, at the top, you can, you can shut the feature off as well. The reason why I like this too is, you know, if it was placed on YouTube, you could put the captions in Spanish. So even while I'm speaking English, you could read what I was saying.
The text.
Yeah, so, uh, just a, a feature, um, that's available as well. And then, um, public records requests, this is another spreadsheet. You know, through looking at the hybrid at other cities as well as Gilroy itself, there's been members of the public who through their public comments have raised questions about, well, how do I get this? Or, hey, I haven't seen that.
Right.
And that would be a good tool where somebody, you know, administration could hand them a spreadsheet and say, if you want it, just, you can get it or reach out and we'll give it to you. Um, and it kind of highlights that through that, um, public records request spreadsheet. And again, accompanies a QR code.
And the QR code gets you to where?
To the spreadsheet.
The sheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you could click the link. Um, six, um, is regarding the categories of record requests. So I basically took what's in the database and that kind of prompted one of my questions. Everything that's available since what I think is the inception, because that's the first record I could see of May through July of 2023, and that's kind of the spread. Now there's more. I just took, hey, if it's double digit, I'll put it in the category. The only thing I don't include in there is police reports, and that's just because I got those. So if we were to put those in there, um, the first one would be background checks at 540.
Oh my.
And this is just for this year. So January till now as opposed to that. Then it would be citizen reports. Then it would be insurance requests and then arrest logs.
Insurance requests.
And these are insurance companies calling for fire.
For an accident or.
Or accident, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so that it would look, you know, if we chose to put any of those in there, it would still kind of look table-ish, but just include, uh, police reports if, if you wanted. Um, then we get to, hey, how do I join a board commissioner committee? And just kind of highlight those. One of the things I identified as well is, hey, go to the handbook, because a handbook's pretty useful, um, regarding what the roles and responsibilities are for each of the board commissions and committees. But also, hey, speak to a current member like the two that, that you received. Um, and so we kind of highlight, how do you know who's on those commissions to reach out and talk? And that kind of leads us to this visual aid. So you, on the website, if you clicked on the boards and commissions hyperlink, it would take you, uh, to that image over on the right. The green column highlights which board, commission or committee you select it. If we chose OGO, you'd be able to look at all the members. You could email them based on their email address. Um, you could look at the vacancies. The documents are typically the bylaws, so you could look at the bylaws. And then if they're so inclined, um, maybe motivated by what they read and what they, uh, who they emailed, they could apply online on number six up there in the right corner.
So besides the bylaws, would you have minutes there as well or no?
We point them to the agenda and it's.
I would.
It would just be.
Well, we already have the web link through Laserfish that people can access the open government commission. My minutes and agendas are in the package. So, and that's where ideally I would like for all of the boards and commissions to be there. Because that's our official repository for the city.
Yeah. Okay, so just a link maybe or?
And then the last question was, hey, how do I know what public meetings are happening? And this just points them to the civic engagement calendar. One of the things I highlight in the description is you can click the notify me button and it will import the schedule into your Google calendar.
Calendar or something.
For future dates. Um, and then as well as, hey, you can go to the city's agenda portal to pull up, you know, the specific agenda item.
I so like looking at a calendar picture than a list, which is so much easier.
So very broadly, um, I know we've discussed the five. These came out to be eight. Tried not to get into too much detail, um, but that's kind of where I left off. Any questions or feedback?
No, you just have to hang around with it.
I say it just room for improvements.
Uh, I think that's really what we have been talking about, right? I mean, here's the, here's, here's how to, I mean, it makes it almost easy once you get there, right? To, to get somewhere else, like, oh, I want to know what the answer is to that. Or, I mean, although I find myself doing that also on other websites and I don't know how half an hour goes by. Epic you need to death, but, uh, I think that's great. I think that's great. How about you, Gary?
Well, I think, again, you did an awesome job. Um, and it's, you know, really is just enough information, you know, without overwhelming somebody.
Yeah. Well, and I think that if you are, have an interest in joining a commission, I think that piece of it is really valuable. And I wonder if other commissions might do a page like that. You know, I mean, that's just right there, uh, just really concise and here's what we do.
We'll be able to bring you the data to which ones are clicked more that frequently FAQs.
Yeah.
Uh, because some of them will be clicked a lot and others don't. Now that will help you determine if it's time to turn some over.
Right.
Or, or get rid of one or two. But, um, from a staff perspective, I don't see this being a heavy lift for us to, you know, to take what you've done and incorporate it. And, um, the only thing I'd say is I'll just have the city attorney look at it. I don't see anything there that would bring a spark to me and then we could, if you get that off your list.
So we don't need to get this approved. We just.
No, you, you really, this is a staff function.
Okay.
And, uh, we're just helping you with the website.
That's great. That is really great. But honestly, I would make a suggestion to other commissions that just that one sheet, you know? If you're thinking about the open government, here's what we do, here's what you can expect. That's really valuable. Excellent. All right. Comments?
No public comments.
Oh, let's close some of it. Okay, um, do we?
Yeah, you, let's take a vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll make a motion, we accept the subcommittee's recommendations for FAQs.
Okay.
Now second.
Okay, Commissioner Salavia?
Yes.
Vice Chair Edisberger?
Yes.
And Chair Benz?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Excellent. 6.4. Jim, OGO work plan 24 and 25.
I think that was 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, so I don't really.
Okay.
I don't really need to say mine.
More likely than not, we're not going to have this item title for the next feature because we pretty much covered it all.
Because it's, yeah, it's there. We're not adding anymore. All right, public comments?
No public comments.
All right, let's close public comments. And 6.5, OGO training slash budget. Jim?
Uh, let's see, board commission training, uh, each of the, you have already determined what trainings you will have. One of the things that was a little bit interesting is that there's not really true like open government or Brown Act training, but we do have the, the trainings that, uh, you normally get, which is Brown Act. So, um, we can, um, at some point, maybe when we get the rest of the group here to figure a meeting to do that and who does that, I could bring you some options of what Brown Act training, uh, because I think like we stated, we'd like to see something different. But, uh, uh, Brown Act, work commission, and then Jedi training. I don't have Jedi training for you, but I can give you an update on the Jedi program. Uh, the, uh, the city committee, uh, which is a group of employees that, um, from each department that volunteered to be a part of this, uh, we have just completed the, um, staff and community survey. And, uh, we, uh, those questions were about how people felt working here, how they felt like living in the community, what things, you know, some things that they've seen that they think we should improve on. And so it's a very, rather robust, um, survey. And I, I got to see it today and it's really quite informative and I think quite helpful. Uh, so the committee will digest that at the end of this month and then they will present an update to the entire Jedi program to council in September. Uh, so the end result, what, actually what the, the committee has thought to do too is instead of waiting till we get done with this whole Jedi program, go ahead and do Jedi training now and see what comes up and what that helps steer, uh, you know, I wish I could say it was my idea, it wasn't. Uh, but I think it's a really good one because this process is going to take probably a total of 24 months and is not going to really ever be over. And so if you're waiting till the end of this process to get training, there's already good training out there and there's already a lot of people who have been through this. So that was really refreshing to hear from the committee. So I, I, it was mentioned that, uh, you know, we needed to do this for boards and commissions. And I reminded the group that that's actually where it started. It was started that we need to train our boards and commissions about, and then we expanded that into the organization as a whole. Because we don't even have a, a Jedi, you know, program or anything. So I'm really encouraged by the work that's been going on. And I think in the next few weeks, especially at council, you'll see some of the, the results of what's going on.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so. Unless you have any questions?
Questions? Public comment?
No public comment.
Public comment? Uh, new business?
All right, this is my show here. So basically, um, as you can see, I still gave you, um, two reports, one in the Word format and the other one in Excel. Um, Excel format, as you can see, is still pretty hard to read.
Mm-hmm.
But the Word format is, it's pretty much self-explanatory. It's changing the beginning of their request. Um, I just wanted to give you some updates on, uh, some highlights here. Um, what PRA side for the city hall side, not the police, because the police department is very succinct on what their log is and whatnot. So for this second quarter, we have our 94 PR, uh, public records requests that were transmitted to our office from the second quarter. Average response time was 6.78 days, with median response time is five. Seventy-four requests were from the website, so that represented a percentage to 79%. And, uh, 20 of the, uh, of the 94 PRA requests were from email. So I actually have to, I don't know, mention it to the system. Out of this quarter, 91 were completed, one was returned and one was withdrawn. And I wanted to give you some information on one of the PR, uh, two other PRAs. PRA 23, uh, 00172. The request was submitted a separate request because it was a, it was incomplete. The information is that I just wanted copies of my ID.
What's the property?
Right.
So he submitted another, uh, public records request with the.
With the information.
Information. The other one, uh, was, uh, 2023 dash 002808. And, um, it was not completed in here, but it is completed as of August 2nd of 2023. And, uh, the other one where you had an information. And the other one where you had an information piece, Ms. Commissioner Salavia actually had a email to me about, there was one PRA number that was skipped and I think it was.
25, 125.
125. And the reason being for that one specifically was the fact that it was a repeat, another fire incident. And basically, fire requested that the item be deleted. Now, in hindsight, I should have just said canceled altogether, but it was already deleted by incident.
Okay.
What happened with 00158?
Let me take a look here.
That's just interesting to me.
Records about my great grandfather. Oh, yes, so this was a student or his son or who requested information about his grandfather. And I asked him specifically, like, what information are you asking specifically? Because there could be resolutions with the name, minutes. So I wanted to get more detail about it. Because if he said, like, I want a biography, like, I don't have that. So I asked for that information and I never got a response back. I actually called the phone number and I got his mom. And the mom says, like, oh, let me come contact, yes, check with my son. Never heard that, so I had to call his mom. It was unfortunate, but it was like, it could have been a.
Who was the grandfather?
Charles H. Pierce, who served in 1924 through 1938. So like, was his work period.
Interesting. He probably could go to the historical museum. And the Golden Museum to get.
Because when I was.
Family went to research.
When I was type, you know, did his name, Charles Pierce, I had over like 50 heads of the information. But of course, not necessarily his council member Pierce. It could have been Charles Pierce, other resident, so, and which he was, but.
Yeah, interesting.
So I had to make sure the resources, the documentation was required. But as you can see, some of, and going forward, of all the breakdowns of the departments, one was for administration, six were from the city for the city clerk's office, 37 was for building and they will always be the largest number here. Code enforcement was four, fire prevention, 10, finance, 13, fire, 12, HR, one, out of those two. So building will always be number one.
Okay. Should we receive a report or do we recommend receiving a report?
No motion is necessary.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Oh.
Going through the police reports, the only thing, and it's not a huge issue, but the April totals don't actually equal what they have? They report 203, but it adds up to 221. And they report 340 or 329 total and it adds up to 347.
Oh, wow.
So I just wasn't sure if they use this for other types of reporting.
I'll take the, I'll contact the city.
And May's total is off as well. They reported 258 and it's 278.
I've heard this question before. I just can't remember the answer.
I want to say it's like because people request, make requests that are not available or they're not allowed to have them, like.
Well, I guess my point being if you add up all those numbers, it doesn't come up to 203.
Right.
From 63 to zero.
Yeah.
I feel like I've heard the explanation before, but anyway, I will find out.
Call a quick check here, see if the equation was wrong.
Oh, okay, yeah. Because I was looking, I'm like, did they miss a cell? Based on this, I can't tell.
No, they were checking to see if anybody really reads it.
And then if we wanted them to report, or is it, could we ask them, hey, do you have the ability of reporting another category?
What's the other category?
I'm kind of interested, in 2018, there was a law passed called Right to Know. You know, where you can ask for specific police records. And I'd be curious whether the public is asking.
Usually they ask after an incident. It's my guess.
Yeah.
Or if somebody, kid got arrested or cited by somebody, then there's, I would guess, there's usually an ask.
Doesn't hurt to ask the question.
Yeah.
I will ask.
And I'll put it in a formal email.
Yes, I will ask because there is no formula in, it's just a straight up number. They have it in the system. So I will.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, so we receive the report. 7.2, discussion on public voting record. Jim?
This had been mentioned before and so I'll just kind of repeat what I think I said last time is that this is not one that I would want staff to be involved with in any way, shape or form. I would not restrict your ability to make a recommendation to council or something like that. But this is one where you're asking about political decisions and political voting and what's behind them and that's your right to ask. But I'm not privy to do that and.
You think it's political?
Oh, I think it's very political. And one reason is that voting, and this is my personal, or I would say my professional opinion, voting, voting, voting records are misleading. And let's say you vote against something because it doesn't go far enough. It's been politicized that you voted against it and I wouldn't want to put my.
Have to Congress all the time.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be the impetus for council to be put in that position. But like I said, I never will interfere with what you guys want to do, but I, I don't advocate for them.
So do you, do you save their voting records? I mean.
Other than in the minutes, that's.
That's it. So somebody would actually have to just do it.
Compile it.
Yeah, yeah, to look at that. Interesting. I wonder if anybody else does.
The Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors does. So like when I click on District One, I can see what board she sits on, how she voted on each initiative. And then what the overall result was. But I, the justification is sound to me. I mean, yeah, as far as not, not having it.
I love data just the most as anybody else.
Yeah, I guess I could see that. Okay, anything else? All right, future commission initiated agenda items. Anyway, what is it? Did you have coffee today? You don't drink coffee.
I do.
Oh, you do.
Yeah, that's my one vice. I gave up smoking. I gave up alcohol. Coffee, I refuse. Chair Benz, you had mentioned at a previous meeting about maybe tweaking how often we meet.
Oh.
Which kind of led me, you know, it's probably a good time for us to look at the open government commission bylaws. So I'd be willing to do that, bring it back. Hey, here's maybe some recommended based on what you said and maybe at our next meeting.
Honestly, I think six times a year would be so much better than four and then our one-off emergency meetings.
And the bylaws still give you both the authority to nix if there's nothing on the agenda.
We got nothing to talk about.
But I, you know, I like the momentum we've created, so.
Okay, all right.
The only issue you may run into is that the council directed you to have quarterly meetings by ordinance, so you would need an ordinance change.
So it's not just the bylaws. It would be an ordinance. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then you would have to get a staff recommendation to change that ordinance. And not because we don't like you, it's just that it might open the door for all the other boards and commissions to want to do it, too. And so that.
That's such a government answer.
It's the truth.
So we could still do like.
Emergency meetings.
Special meetings?
Special meetings.
You might be able to.
We can just do freestanding special meetings. Okay.
Well, remember when we did this, special meetings for the past couple of times we did, it was basically to get all the stuff in your work plan to be completed.
Get it finished, right, right. I'm just thinking if you have that pace, though, of, you know, every other month, basically, you could get stuff implemented or, you know, laid out so that you could go forward and you don't have to have a special meeting. All right, so where are we with that? So we may have to find another city person to help them.
Can I get fired from this? Can I get fired?
No, but I don't see Jolie here anymore.
Well, if we still leave it on the agenda for next, you know, at least it would allow us to look at it.
Okay, yeah.
And then put it.
Yeah.
Put it to rest, you know? At least we said, hey, we're looking at our governance. We either recommend changes or none. There might, there might be others, other than just when you meet.
I haven't looked at the bylaws for a little while, so yeah, that would be a good idea. All right, so do we need to say anymore about that? Nope. All right, City Minister, here?
I have no update unless you have any questions or anything in general. I don't know about.
I got nothing, just personal.
Potholes are all good. Trees are trend.
Speaking of potholes.
I'm sorry, it's not under your purview.
No, this is personal. I tripped on a listed sidewalk. You don't seem concerned. I hurt my knee.
I'm concerned either her.
It happened yesterday.
But the sidewalks are not owned and maintained by the city through, by the individual property owner.
But nobody owns this property because there's no property. It's the, it's Monterey Street between Lucesa and 10th.
Somebody owns it.
No, there were no, there are no houses.
Well, I mean, somebody owns a land. Somebody owns everything. I'm sorry, you're.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. I do appreciate that.
I'll send you the claim filing website.
I did have to, I did have to use Neosporin and a Band-Aid. Could you reimburse that? All right, I'm loving the love here. Okay, anything else? Do we accept the minutes or we pass the minutes?
We did pass the minutes, so you're good on that. And the next future meeting is going to be on November 2nd, which is going to be a special meeting. And it's going to be in the other room.
Okay, the little room.
At 5:30 PM.
5:30.
And this will basically be the same type of regular meeting you would have on the ninth, but the ninth is basically the thank you dinner.
And you guys are going to go, right? We have an added invitation, yes, but we got to go.
We did send out, that saved a date, so.
I've got a pretty important, busy life, but I'll try to fit it in because there's just a little bit of notice.
It was really fun last time. Are you going to, are you going to suggest maybe that different commissioners sit at different tables? Like, not all the OGO people sit together or the library people?
The idea is basically we try to make sure that people can commingle with other boards. One time that you can do that.
Yeah, you got to spread the kids around. They suck together.
See what we can do.
All right.
The other thing that I will probably say is that we'll probably be approving the 2024 calendar.
On the 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Excellent, and so I have 703, adjourned.